Good morning and welcome to the November 14th business meeting. First off, I'd like to introduce Dan Johnson, who is our acting county administrator, and ask him to take the role.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Board. Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Humberson?
Here.
Chair Bernard?
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, as you may have noticed, there are six of us up here today, and we're honored to have Paul Reynolds here, who is a board member of our Housing Authorities. And the first item on the agenda is what, Dan?
The first item, the first item today is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Great. With that, I'll ask the clerk to please read the consent agenda.
Chair, you were going to recess first.
What?
You were going to recess the business meeting and open the Housing Authority meeting.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you. So I'll announce that the Board will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners convenes a Housing Authority for the next item. Thank you.
Okay, today's Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Housing Authority and Social Services for case management for the Jackson Transitional Housing Program. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Housing Authority and Social Services for case management for the housing, our families program. And approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Housing Authority and Metro. And approval of the local implementation strategy for the Metro Affordable Housing Bond.
Thank you. Would any Commissioner like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second?
It's been moved in second. That we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you for coming today. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, I'll announce that we'll adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. And we have first a presentation.
We do. I'd like to invite Erica Silver up to the podium from Health Housing and Human Services. She is going to do a recognition of Veterans Day for us.
Oh, thank you. Greetings. My name is Erica Silver. I'm a Human Services Manager with Clackamas County Social Services, and I'd also like to call up Jennifer Harvey and Tony Carter.
And to right there.
Thank you for coming today.
Am I supposed to press something here?
No, just, can you just stall for a second? It's, keep talk or something.
Stretch.
It's not up there yet.
Well, I'd like to acknowledge all the veterans and military family members that are here. We know that you make tremendous sacrifices for the freedoms that we often take for granted, but your work is appreciated. In my opinion, it should be Veterans Day every day. Also, our county Veterans Service Office staff is here. Could you raise your hands? And they're here working on behalf of our veterans each and every day, and we'll talk more about that. So, in Oregon, there are 297,000 veterans. In Clackamas County, our numbers went down just a little bit of 28,778. And our known homeless veterans, and we'll talk more about this, but as of the date of this presentation a couple of weeks ago was at 97. And actually, while our state and our neighboring counties have mostly seen increases in their numbers, not us, and we'll talk more about that later. So I also want to mention that veterans in our county workforce are making meaningful impacts in every single department. So the goals for veterans in Clackamas County, within Performance Clackamas, zero unsheltered homeless veterans, and that homeless veterans are supported to regain stable housing. We want to make sure that our veterans have easy and effective access to benefits through the county Veterans Service Office. And we also want to make sure that veterans have access to employment, training, and education so they can obtain living wage jobs. And we have four accredited Veterans Service Officers in our county Veterans Service Office. That's located on the second floor of this building. Janice Harlan, Heather Mewald, Gina Thomas, and Felicia Riddings. And Jackie Bauer and Travis Preciado also work in that office. And last year, this amazing staff met with over 2,000 veterans and family members. They filed 952 compensation claims with 900 claims were granted. That doesn't mean that the other ones won't be granted. It just means that they weren't granted yet. And they generated over $12 million in new federal monetary benefits. So way to go, Clackamas County VSO. It's an incredible investment that the county makes and gets, you try to get that kind of return on any other investment, and I guarantee you, you won't get it. So, and it's also doing the right thing by our veterans. So very, very proud of that work. Okay, so I wanted to mix it up a little bit, and we've got a couple of quiz questions for you. And just to make it interesting, so it's not death by PowerPoint. So Vietnam veterans with specific health conditions, including the ones that you see, and I'm not going to read off all of them. Get a chance to read that over? Okay. They do not have to prove a connection between their disease and military service to be eligible to receive VA healthcare and disability compensation. So these conditions together are called what?
Agent Orange presumptive conditions.
You got it right.
That would have been my.
So, thank you, Commissioner. Turn it over to Jennifer Harvey.
Hi, thank you. I'm Jennifer Harvey. I'm the manager of the Employment and Training Programs for Clackamas County. And last year, we served 42 veterans in our employment program. 69% of those veterans were employed during the year. 72% were still employed at 90 days. That's our check-in time. And at that point, we exit folks from the program so we can enroll new veterans into the program. Our average wage was $16.12 an hour. The jobs included manufacturing, construction, transportation, security, retail. Really, they run the gamut. We look at our veterans and what their career interests are and also their goals. Many of them have goals that they can only earn a certain amount of income in order to maintain some of the other benefits that they have. So we really work with our veterans in a holistic way. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you so much for that amazing work. And just as an FYI, that's a picture of my niece up there who was serving in Afghanistan last year. So ending veteran homelessness. Tony, do you want to take this one?
Hi, I'm Tony Carter. I'm the Housing Services Manager for the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. We run the rent assistance programs that are helping many of our veterans, and we work closely with Social Services on a referral basis to help veterans get into permanent housing. Social Services programs house 62 homeless veterans. We have a VASH voucher program, which is through the VA. This program requires that the veteran be chronically homeless and disabled and in what they call an honorable discharge eligible for VA benefits. So these VASH vouchers have been awarded every year to the Housing Authority for the last five years. And so we are up to now 121 VASH vouchers in our county. Of those, 71 are currently housed and have been housed for more than a year, 39% of them. 11 more vouchers were issued and are in housing search mode. 14 are going to our new Clayton Moore Commons Veteran Housing Project, and they are getting housed this week. And 25 are still available. Some of those have been saved for another project-based voucher project that's coming up. And then the other remaining are, we are waiting for referrals from the Veterans Administration. We can't go out and just find these veterans, and we can't select them on our own. Social Services can't select them as well. They have to come to us through the VA. So we've had a little snare in that process. The VA has had a lot of turnover, and so finding those case managers to get out there and get those veterans that are, they're actually walking out into the homeless camps to find them and to reconnect with them and get them into our office has been quite difficult. But we have a new case manager on board, so hopefully we'll get those all leased up soon. The known homeless veterans reduced 35% from a year ago. That's a big jump down, which is great. 62 veteran households were prevented from homelessness.
Yeah, so I'm really proud of the work that's being done, and I want to personally thank the Board of County Commissioners for your support for our efforts to end veteran homelessness. And because we have such a coordinated approach here, and we're putting resources, we're putting money into it, we are making a really significant impact. Clearly, it's not where we want to be, but we're moving in the right direction. And so we want to definitely keep doing that, and we're pretty excited by those results. So at the Veterans Village, they sheltered 32 veterans, and of these, 11 exited to permanent housing. There are, including four women, 11 people that were 62 or above, seven people of color, and four with physical disabilities. The safety off the streets that the Veterans Village provides cannot be underestimated. So again, really proud of the work and want to thank each of you personally for your support of that project.
So Ken?
A little update. It's now 13 that have been placed in housing, and there's five scheduled to go into supported housing within this month.
At the Clayton Moore?
Yes.
Yeah. Fantastic.
Since you, since before you printed our booklet here, a little bit of an update.
Yeah, they do make us do that a couple of weeks in advance, so. So, okay, here's another trivia question for you. How many U.S. Presidents served in the military?
So I, you know, we look at this packet ahead of time, and I looked it up, and the answer, the answer's not on here. It says 26 on the web.
My sources said 30, and I meant to print out a list, so we'll have to, we'll have to loop back to that.
Okay, I challenge you all to name them.
George Washington? We'll have, we'll have to loop back on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, and then here's another trivia question. And this picture is a little bit of a hint, but what is the correct order of precedence when displaying military flags and insignias together? And the order of precedence is based on when each branch was created.
They announced this at one of the events we were at this Friday, or Saturday? Friday. Ken?
Well, the Marine Corps would debate the order.
I saw it.
I will say.
You saw it ahead of time. So there you go. So, just an FYI. Okay? Army, Marines, Navy, Air Force, Coast Guard, at least that's what we're told.
Well, we've been debating that one for 244 years. We will continue to debate.
Let's keep doing that. So that is really all I've got, other than to say that Heather brought up some wonderful little promotional items for our county Veterans Service Office. They're on that cart there, but we'll also be out in the hall because we don't want to disrupt the meeting. So if there's any veterans or supporters of veterans that would like to pick up a few of those items, please stop by. And I've listed our contact information for the Veterans Service Office. It's 650-5631. It's a little unclear, but it's pretty easy to also Google it if you need to, or on the county website for those that might be watching on TV. And the Clackamas Veterans Workforce Program, you know, is also pretty easy to find, and they're down by the bus mall on 11th. And last but not least, just a huge thanks to our veterans and military families. And as I stated earlier, to me, this should be every day. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you, and we thought it might be appropriate to invite all the veterans who are here today to come on up, and we'll take a photo.
Tall and back?
Yep, that's great. Okay, great, thank you.
So with that, as a Chair of the Commission, I'd like to thank you for your service. And I've said it before, and it was said the other day, freedom is not free. And so thank you for making this country free. Ken?
On that note, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out a couple of numbers for the public that may be watching us or later on watch us. 57 million Americans have served in the military since the inception of our country. 41 million have served in active-duty situations. 1.1 million have died in the service of our country. The youngest to have ever attempted to get in and basically serve was eight years old in the Civil War. He was a drummer boy. They wouldn't let him enlist directly until he was 13. He was paid out of the donations by officers in the Civil War to, until he was 13, and then he was allowed to enlist. And he served for 55 years, passing away in 1937. And by the way, right, Congressman, we have 50,000 openings in the VA system as we speak for employees. It has been so woefully underfunded. Normally, there's around 20,000 because there's people that come in, transfer out, retire, et cetera. Right now, there's 50,000.
Well, I had the opportunity this summer to visit some battlefields in the South where I believe in the Civil War, more people died than in any war, all the wars combined. And, you know, it was terrible. But that, that one story about the eight-year-old is pretty, pretty amazing. Thank you, Ken. With that, we'll move on to citizen communication, and I have Les Poole's card up here. Les, please join us, and thank you for coming.
That was a really good tribute. And my father was in the Merchant Marines. He did, like so many, he was underaged and got in late in the war. And later on, when he was ill, it coincided with the time when the federal government authorized VA benefits for Merchant Marines. They didn't get them until the 90s, so this is, this, this day every year, and of course, I'm referring to Veterans Day, but every year, it brings a special, a special reflection. My grandfather served in World War I, and he was in a platoon that was gassed in the Ardennes. And I have a photo of him and all the, all the others. There's 55 of them in the photo, and two of them survived. And so when I was a little boy in the 60s, my grandfather passed away from emphysema. And I thought, oh my God, he must have smoked, because, you know, you're five years old. And years later, I found out what had really happened to him. So I never served, but as, I was old enough as a kid to see what was going on in Vietnam. And I did go to the ceremony that Steve Bates and the Boring Foundation held. I want to thank Steve for everything he's done and is doing to honor all the vets, especially the Vietnam vets. And I appreciate Commissioner Savis being there. Yeah, it's, it's a time of year, heading of the holidays, that we need to count our blessings. And on a completely different subject, I think it's time for me to show up at Metro. I'm not quite sure what I should ask them today or what I should tell them, but they're getting an awful lot of input from special interest groups, and they're not getting much input from the citizens about the transportation policy. And I look back at Metro's failings in 2015 with the entire urban reserves process and how that fiasco was resolved or band-aided together by the legislature. And I bring that up because at the time that was going on, I was in Salem advocating for the county, and we were all told that Stafford would be fixed, and there would be money, there would be energy, Clackamas County would get its share. And I look at what's going on now with transportation, and I look at how a transportation bond measure that was proposed is now all over the map. Could be $3 billion that Metro's talking about putting on the ballot. And I see Clackamas County not really getting the share it needs. And we've got real growing pains here. We can't just be a bedroom community. I'm starting to sound like Commissioner Savis, and I appreciate him staying after that. So I am going to go to Metro and just let them know that there's an awful lot of folks that don't agree with the direction they're heading right now. And I invite you to join me. And I also invite you to let me know anything you'd like me to ask them or tell them. It's not a trick question. I mean that sincerely. We're going to have to address it, and I just really, really am troubled, and it's nothing else I need to say except that I'm 17 seconds over.
So I believe the 18th, is it the 18th we're having the meeting here?
I believe so, yes.
The Metro T-2020 Task Force will be meeting in Clackamas County. Love to have you there. I'll tell you that we've been working really hard, and my plan is to present full funding for the Sunrise. And our challenge is speaking the language that would convince people in the room to support moving forward on that, and we're working on that. And also, you know, I think the Charlie Trail Bridge to, or from Glasso to Oregon City is important as well as the parking structure. And you're right, where Clackamas County isn't getting its fair share, and we're going to fight to get that in a friendly way. So I hope you'll show up on the 18th. I'll, we'll make sure you, it's for sure that's the date where you can show up, and be happy to also meet with you and show you the proposal.
Right.
So you have something to speak about. Paul?
Yeah, I just wanted to encourage Les to, I want to take him up on his offer, encourage him to show up actually next Wednesday night at Metro for the next T-2020 meeting. The public comment works basically like this. Everyone puts their name in a little bin, and they pull the name like out in a lottery. So you may not be able to speak on the December 18th. You may not be able to speak next, next Wednesday, but you certainly increase your odds by showing up if you want to support that. On October 30th, at our business meeting, I believe, I believe it's October 30th, could be the 31st. I'll take that back, it's probably the 31st. We passed a resolution. We had quite a dialogue up here about the resolution. And if I'm mistaken on the date, I'm sorry, but it was a couple Thursdays ago, I believe.
Halloween.
Halloween. And I bring that up to say that we had a, quite, quite a discussion. So on Tuesday, we're, hopefully we want to get full funding, or excuse me, on Thursday. On Tuesday, it seemed like, where we were, what I was hearing was doing the best we can, and that looked more like a third of the funding. On the next evening, which was the next Metro T-2020 meeting, I was really disappointed when I went there at Metro to hear what was being said, and, and I got reservations. So I'm hoping that today, when we talk about full funding, we're talking full funding for the full project, not dividing the project in half and getting full funding for half. So I think the words are really critical, that we're talking full funding for the full project, not full funding for a portion of the project. So how it's couched is important, but I just want to make sure, take you up on your offer, Les, and, and get some voices there for Clackamas County on, on the Sunrise Gateway Project.
I just want to add that the citizens have spoken, and the two categories that received the most support was safety and congestion relief. It wasn't build no more roads. So our proposal on the Sunrise will accommodate all modes of transportation except for light rail, of course. But we may, we may have an opportunity to include bus in the future if Metro, or TriMet steps up and provides adequate service. So that is the kind of issue we're looking at. Anyway, I am requesting full funding of the entire project.
Thank you for clarification.
And we've worked that out, and I'm hopeful. I'm hopefully, hopefully if we speak the right language, we'll get a lot closer there, if not all the way there. One of the questions, by the way, is what is the amount they're going to ask for? I don't know. I heard $7 billion the other night. I've heard 3.1. I haven't heard anything lower than that. So I'm not sure, but I'm, I'm still solid on, I'm really concerned if it involves property taxes, because I think we are property tax burdened. Certainly, if you live in a metro area, you are. So I'm very concerned about the funding mechanism, and we'll be, we'll be discussing that, I believe, in November, or December. And with that, we'll move on to public hearing. What, yes, oh.
I just want to confirm the date for you, Commissioners. The date is December 18th. The meeting will be held at the Harmony Community Campus.
Is there a time?
Confirming the time right now.
Okay. It's probably in the evening.
I believe it's the 6:00 PM. We'll have to confirm.
Yeah. And with that, we're going to have a public hearing. What's that public hearing on?
Before we get to the public hearing, there's a small apology I need to do. I was a minute and a half into this new job, and I forgot to do something, which is to acknowledge Staff of the Board, which is County Council, Mr. Stephen Magcor, and Clerk of the Board, Mary Rathke. My humble apologies. Moving on, we have Ken Martin joining us today to discuss Board Moving on, we have Ken Martin joining us today to discuss Board Order for a Boundary Change Proposal CL-19005, Annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One. With that, Ken?
This is another in the series that you see regularly. This is a piece of property, 24 acres inside the city of Happy Valley. West provides the sewer service in that area. There are sewer lines in 172nd and Sunnyside adjacent to the property, and we'd recommend approval.
I just, I had one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Do we know, I didn't catch it if it's in our packet, but do you know how many units are anticipated to be built on that 24 acres?
It's a commercial subdivision, so I can't really say exactly what's going in there.
Okay, thank you.
That was the information that.
So it's not housing units, it's all commercial?
That's my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? So I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. The crowds, keep the crowds back. All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Board Order for Boundary Change Proposal CL-19-005, Annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second.
It's moved to second, that we approve a Board Order for Boundary Change Proposal CL-19-005, Annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chairman, is there a Board Order number yet?
No, I assigned that afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item is the Consent Agenda. I'd ask the clerk to read the Consent Agenda by title.
Okay, today's consent agenda, under Health Housing and Human Services, approval of a cooperative agreement with Clackamas County Children's Commission for the new Head Start Classroom Building Project in Milwaukee. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, a resolution approving the five-year Transportation Capital Improvement Program fiscal years 2019, 2020 through 2023, '24. Approval of a contract with Cardno, Inc. for engineering services of the 100, or 232nd Drive Milepost Point 03 Project. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, and approval of an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and the Oregon Department of Transportation for enforcement of unlawful parking in winter recreation parking areas. Under Business and Community Services, we have approval of a library, construction, and operation intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the city of Gladstone. And approval of a library facility intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the city of Gladstone. Under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Metro to provide illegal dump site cleanup services. And underwater environment services, approval of brand standardization for hatch company, flow meter, and auto samplers for water environment services. And approval of a contract with Murray Smith, Inc. for the pump station rehabilitation and upgrades for water environment services. That concludes today's consent agenda.
Thank you. I'd just like to note that Gladstone City Council voted unanimously on this agreement, and I'm hoping we can get there, too. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I should ask, does anyone wish to pull an item from the consent agenda?
I do not, but I did want to just speak a little bit about the, about the Gladstone agreements.
Let's get a second. It's moved in second. Paul?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I would just kind of echo, or kind of just build on what Commissioner Bernard just stated. Yeah, it's, appreciate staff's hard work on a very complex agreement between the city of Gladstone, and I want to acknowledge that it's always difficult when governments fight one another, and public dollars are at risk or wasted. And I'd just say that the last couple of years, working towards this agreement, we're working in good faith, and I think that that's a big thing that we don't always see. But I really want to just acknowledge that Gladstone, the mayor, did contact me and said they had a unanimous vote to support it by the Gladstone City Council. So I'm anticipating our unanimous vote here will just signify and send a message that we can work things out, and we can get to a good place, so.
Yeah, in the work session, I tried to make sure they heard us talk about how positive we're, I mean, really, this, this issue's been going on for a long time, and I thought it moved rather rapidly along near the end. I think that's because they just come to a, an agreement that they were going to work to resolve the problem, and they did it. So I'm very happy about that. So it's moved in second. Any further discussion with that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you very much. And note, that was unanimous on the, the library agreement. All right, now we'll move to county administrator updates.
County interim administrator updates. I've got a couple of items here for you. First, about DTD, that director must be amazing. First, the staff of our Department of Transportation and Development has received more accolades this time for our transportation safety folks. The Furwood CPO emailed us about the great work performed on recent improvements made to the Furwood Road, which included putting in an all-way stop and a new 45 mile an hour speed limit. And was sent to Christian Stuffin and read, "Please know how much we all appreciate how you orchestrated this entire project, both the intersection revamps and the posting of the 45 mile an hour signs. I know you had a shared, you had shared that the state was in charge of that portion of our requests, but we know you kindled the fire that has now warmed our hearts. You and your crew are to be recommended for your window for service." Thank you. So many thanks to Luke Snolley, Rick Pierce, Troy Johnson, Chris Stuffin, who all worked on that project. Next, from our friends at Health Housing and Human Services in the Public Health Division, a number of weeks ago, County Administrator Schmidt relayed to you how they have been partnering with other age organizations to provide a free vaccination clinic. I am happy to relay that the event was held last week and prompted 132 people to come in and be vaccinated for the flu, measles, mumps, rubella, and/or hepatitis A. Declined immunization rates are one of the biggest threats to public health. So this action helps to ensure safe, healthy, and secure communities, one of the board's strategic priorities. I'd like to thank our partners in that effort. Those include Clackamas Fire District, Clackamas Rotary, Providence, the North Clackamas School District, Clackamas Community College, Walla Walla University, and Clackamas Town Center, who held the event. Last but not least, I'm going to go off script here a little bit. I want to do a quick shout-out to Department of Transportation's Transportation Maintenance Manager, Randy Harmon. While I am excited for him, it is with a heavy heart for our department that I inform you, he submitted his retirement yesterday. His last day with the county would be December 31st, 2019. He joined our organization in 1983 as a road maintenance worker, too. And through that work, he has worked his way through a very extensive career and assumed management responsibilities for the program in January of 2015. During his tenure, he has successfully and strategically managed a transitioning workforce. He led a transparent effort to move from a contentious skill-based pay program to a standardized classifications program. He brought a greater focus to their key objectives, the maintenance of the 1,400 linear miles of roadway in Clackamas County, and was a key member of the DTD management team, and he will be missed. And I'd like to thank him for his 36 years of service as a citizen of Clackamas County. With that, that concludes the interim county administrators update.
I just want to add something, if I could, just to, on behalf of Randy Harmon, I just want to say that every time I've ever had a need to reach out to him, I got a prompt response and a good response. I just want to just acknowledge that. I appreciate his years of service and how he's, how he's responded promptly, so thank you.
I'll pass that on. I will today. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hopefully, there's a retirement party?
Yeah.
We're working on that. I just got the letter yesterday.
Yeah, okay.
You haven't got the party planned yet?
Not quite.
All right, so we're going to move on to Commissioner communication. I want to remind everybody that we have an executive session at, after this meeting, and that some of us have appointments at noon, so let's move on to Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be brief. This week was pretty much dominated by a wide variety of different veterans' events throughout the county, and I was pleased to be able to attend quite a few of them, but obviously, you can't be everywhere. But again, I appreciate the acknowledgement, the service of veterans. I just would like to do one specific thing. I'd like to commend the Department of Transportation and Development for their work with the community group that's been put together to work on how the VRF's funds will be spent, managed, what projects they will be on, and how the bookkeeping will be done to make sure that the public is clearly aware that that decision, as difficult as it was, every dime of that money will be going into our local roads. And I really appreciate the work you did on public outreach. You did an outstanding job.
Thank you so much.
And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right, Paul?
Yeah, well, yesterday.
That's right, I got the dog. I'm sorry. My apologies. What's chocolate on the outside and caramel on the inside? Rollo. Well, he's not made of chocolate and caramel, but he sure does look like it. Rollo's a little spry guy who is on the lookout for a new home to call his own. Here's the thing, though, he will be your friend as long as you have some treats first. If you have a piece of cheese or hot dog, that will help him realize that you could be good. He is a playful fellow once he gets to know who you are. He enjoys going for walks and having time in the yard to play, and he takes really good care of his toys. He can be a bit chatty when things are busy and loud. He is hopeful that his forever persons are patient, loving, will take him for walks and training classes, and will help him be the best Rollo he can be. For more information about Rollo or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, similar to a number of us, attended some veterans' events Friday and, and Sunday and, and on Monday. And yesterday, had the privilege to speak at the opening of the Clayton Moore Veterans, or Clayton Moore Commons Veterans Housing Project, 24 units of permanent housing for veterans, which opened yesterday. And it's really an extension or a continuum, if you will, of the Veterans Village, because, as you heard earlier, a number of folks that are, that we found that have been homeless, we got them into the Transitional Veteran Shelter Project. And of course, it was transitional with the goal of having permanent housing. And this project by Northwest Housing Alternatives in partnership with a lot of other nonprofits and so forth, was able to assemble this and build this project. So it was one, pleased and honored to be there. But specifically, it was, I was, I almost broke down in tears yesterday when I walked in and I met, shaking hands, I met a gentleman, Alvin Wilson. And Alvin Wilson came to the Veterans Village in February, and off the street. And he was there, and he, he took residence at Clayton Moore Commons the day before yesterday, Tuesday, the day after Veterans Day. So it was awesome to see, frankly, that, that from off the street to the transitional shelter and the permanent quality housing, to see that, to see that in, in full fruition to completion is just, just, just heartwarming. And let alone the other, other folks. And on Monday, I met a gentleman, a Native American, who, who fought in the Marines. He was a Marine. And he is actually applying for, for, he's on the street right now. The VFW is right now, trying to take care of him right now and provide him temporary housing, but he's actually applying for residency at Clayton Moore Commons. So, you know, it's 24 units it's going to fill, and we need to look at other alternatives in the future, because we have, as you all saw, we have about another 90 or folks, so if we can find them ways of either retaining them or getting them housing, that's our goal. And I just want to just thank everyone involved that was, was part of that, both here at the county, staff, the private sector, nonprofits, the people who brought in food and greeting baskets for the people that are moving into Clayton Moore Commons. Just the outreach and the outpouring of support is just very heartwarming. So that's what I have for today.
Great. And we were at the VFW post Oregon City, the gentleman walked in who's been living in his car, and we directed him there. I don't know if we've heard anything.
Anything yet.
Yeah, well, hopefully, he.
Oh, I do have one thing, I'm sorry. Okay. I thank, appreciate Mary bringing this forward. So there was something that we've read, and I just want, it's, it's just a really heartwarming thing. So it's a, we don't know who the author is of this, but we, we've read it over several last Veterans Day. So here it goes. What is a veteran? Many of us have known a few veterans. Many things have been written about veterans. They are men and women who look the world in the eye. They feel an extra heart tug when the flag goes by. They step a little faster when they hear the beat of the military band. They are veterans. They are the doughboy of the World War I, the GI, the GI World War II. They have seen the Korean skies and fought the cold and silent battle of uneasy Berlin. They are veterans. They are sailors, soldiers, Marines. They are flyers, Seabees, Coast Guard. They are veterans. They have the quiet dignity of a person who knows the price of freedom. They have the clear eyes of a person who respects themselves. They are courage living on Main Street. They are patriotism mowing the lawn on Saturday afternoon. They are good citizenship with a smile on their faces. They are veterans. They are peacetime soldiers, peacetime leaders. They are the first to volunteer in times of trouble and the last to come home. They are veterans. The veteran is a first-class fighter with a quiet walk and a sentimental grin. They are America's most honored citizen. They are veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Commissioner Fisher?
That was nice. So in addition to the talk about Veterans Day and Commissioner Savis talking about homelessness, I did want to mention with my, to my colleagues and everyone, that I had the wonderful opportunity to participate with the Homeless Solutions Coalition of Clackamas County. I know my other commissioners have attended some of those meetings in the past. I had the honor and privilege of being there yesterday, which to me was a huge gift, because as you all know, I was supposed to be in Buffalo this week with a team from Clackamas County studying solutions to the opioid crisis, but I couldn't get out of the airport on Monday, which meant I wouldn't have been able to get there until yesterday, and I would have been coming home today. So I had this wonderful blessing of being here this week, and when you're supposed to be gone and you get to be here, you really recognize the wonderful connections and opportunities to move things forward that we do as commissioners every single day. So yesterday, the Homeless Solutions Coalition of Clackamas County, this is a grassroots group led by former Oregon City Commissioner Nancy Ide and Dan Fowler, who we all know very well. They are a group of citizen members of faith, health, business, citizens that are very concerned about homelessness in our community. Lynn Deschler is a very powerful force who does work on homelessness for our community. These folks get together and they really work to come up with solutions. And one concept that they have been talking a lot about, which they are just now piloting, is a service mall where they have different providers of social services that come to provide connections that has had really awesome results. So I wanted to share that with my colleagues. I'm hoping that they can come and give us a presentation on some of the, the wonderful successes that have occurred thus far. Also, the group, we were able to discuss, our commission was briefed about the effort called Here Together, that's one word. I encourage all of you to go to Facebook and like that Facebook page so that you can be updated on very important information. But this is a regional effort that's comprised of our business community, our philanthropy, nonprofits, elected leaders across the region, and looking at a solution for chronic homelessness. So yesterday, the Homeless Solutions Coalition of Clackamas County signed on to a, to agree with a strategic framework, and that strategic framework, in a nutshell, is that people who are struggling with homelessness, houselessness, need support to get housed and stay housed. And that is, would involve, it involves a flexible wraparound approach that meets the individual where they are, gets them into shelter, and has the services that they need to stay housed. So that is, it's a pretty powerful perspective that is gaining tremendous momentum. I'm sure that my colleagues agree that when we're out there talking with our constituents, this issue is a concern far and wide. And it just is a real blessing to sit for a couple hours with groups here in Clackamas County that really care, and I encourage you all to get engaged. So, thank you.
Thank you. So I also had an opportunity to visit a number of veterans event. Pardon? Oh.
It's okay, go ahead. I'll wait, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Okay.
Please.
Yeah, I've been pretty, pretty busy lately. I had the opportunity to go to the National Association of Counties. I had the opportunity to go to the National Association of Counties, Large Urban County Caucus, and we're at the point where we are actually at that nexus of being a large urban county. So it was a real privilege to go there, and it was probably one of the best conferences I've ever been to. It covered gentrification and housing, and how arts, okay, can make a huge difference in that. We actually visited a community, a neighborhood in LA that was called the Wynwood District. And absolutely, it is now on TripAdvisor's coolest neighborhoods in the US, but it's because of the investment of a long-term investor with the intention that as they did the art and how they revitalized a neighborhood, that it was not going to gentrify. So I learned there are two things you need to do to help revitalize neighborhoods and help with houselessness. Number one, make sure you have people who are in it for the long haul and not just the short-term economic gain of purchasing and flipping and things of that sort. And the second piece is, make sure you have the community buy-in from that whole area. This was a significantly blighted area, and now it has eateries, it has turkeys, it's a tourist spot. It was really a blighted warehouse district, and it's become a national destination and really a focus of arts and culture and what that can do with the right developer and arts and culture in the mix with that. And there was a lot of other things I did, that we did a black sky event, which was a little scary. If our electric grid goes down, we're all in deep trouble, particularly as we're going through a huge cold snap, well beyond cold snap, in, you know, the eastern and midwestern portions of our country. You know, it, resiliency and emergency management, as we move forward, is going to have to continue to be a huge piece of what we did. I got to listen to the former mayor of Miami-Dade, Alex Benales, and Ron Brook, the chairman of the Miami-Dade County Homeless Trust. And the topic was homelessness in urban counties formulating sustainable solutions. And they actually did what they call a housing trust. I'm assuming Here Together may actually be looking at a methodology of that kind where they have a sustainable trust of dollars available to continually work on that problem. Learned a little bit about reducing infant mortality, and we are finding out that people of color oftentimes in these poverty districts often have a higher rate of infant mortality. And I assume that is actually the same thing here, probably, in many ways. And I know that our health department has data that will give us that kind of information. But I really have to tell you, the high point for me was listening to David Lawrence Jr. He was remarkable. He is among the country's best-known journalists, and he retired at 56. And he became a leading national advocate for children, especially focused on the crucial earning, early learning years. The retired publisher of the Miami Herald and the Troy Creek Press now chairs the Children's Movement of Florida. He has 13 honorary doctorates, chaired the local arrangements for the 1994 Summit of the Americas, and co-founded a vocational technical school in Haiti. He has five children and great-grandchildren. And what I did was bring home his book. And it's called A Dedicated Life: Journalism, Justice, and a Chance for Every Child. And it certainly feeds into the initiatives that we are working on in early childhood development, including Universal at this point, looking at universal childcare for working parents, and also to get kids in early, because most of their brain development happens before three-year-old, three-year-olds. So I'm going to ask for your, I just want to read this one piece because it brought me to tears. So in the epilogue of this book, he goes, "I've led blue-ribbon panels in Florida on two different child deaths, Ryleah and Nubia. Ryleah received her name with the intent of signifying, 'Remember, I love you always.' There is, in fact, no evidence that she was ever loved. Both were tortured to death. I've never been in favor of the death penalty, but I could make exceptions. There is certainly dysfunctional in this world, but there is evil, too. Ryleah would be a young adult now, Nubia would be in high school. They deserved the years they lost and many more. How different their lives could have been with early learning programs that provided brain-stimulating learning and high-quality pre-kindergarten, and the ability to see a doctor or nurse regularly, and families who took advantage of skill-building programs that helped people, parents and caregivers, provide long, loving oversight and care. It is that vision that has led to the Pre-K, the Children's Trust, and the Children's Movement. Millions, literally millions of children have benefited. We need to believe in every family and every child." And he did sign the book for me. And he sent me home saying, you know, "Make sure that you, you know, you have, you work with your colleagues who are caring souls." That's basically what his advice was that I left out. So absolutely wonderful opportunity to do that, and I want to thank my colleagues for allowing me to take these opportunities to go to these places and bring back best practices from around the country of what, of what we do. And yes, I did spend Veterans Day with veterans. I was at Lake Oswego for their event in the morning. I went to Lake Oswego in the afternoon for their event there, but I also, I just missed my comrades here in arms. I had just, you had just left when I showed up at the Oregon City VFW, and I had a wonderful time just chatting with veterans about Vietnam veterans. And boy, we need to start taping their stories. That was my takeaway from Veterans Day. You know, we need to start sitting with these Vietnam veterans, and when they'll sit there and casually tell you, "I was on a helicopter and it was booming below me, and you could see light down there," and, you know, they're sitting there with their, you know, not the kind of armor that we have for our troops today and in peril. We need to have those kinds of stories archived somewhere. So I think it's something I'd really like to see us take a look at. One more thing, there is a veteran who we all know who's running for Secretary of State, and that is Cameron Smith, who did a wonderful job heading the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs. He was in one of the worst fights, I think it was the Iraq War of Fallujah. You might know that, Ken. But this was the point where they were doing door-to-door, hand-to-hand combat from one room, you know, from one house to another. It was, it was a bloodbath.
It's the worst kind of urban warfare.
Oh, it was, it was there, and he survived that. He just recently threw in, he's a young guy, he's smart. Lots of people are running for Secretary of State, I know, but I would encourage our veterans to take a look at Cameron. He's one of your own, and I'm delighted that he has decided to move from the ODVA and being an administrator on Business and Community Services at the state to actually take the risk to do this. So go Cameron, and I, go fight, win, basically. Okay, word of the week, arts and culture, and then I'm done. Veteran, a person who has served in a military force, especially one who has fought in a war. Veterans Day occurs on November 11th every year in the United States in honor of the 11th hour, the 11th day of the 11th month of 1918 that signaled the end of World War I, known as Armistice Day. And we called it Armistice Day, I believe, up until the 50s. On November 11th, 1921, an unidentified American soldier killed in the war was buried at Arlington National Cemetery in Washington, DC, and that is the tomb of the unknown soldier. And here we are from our first military president, George Washington. "The willingness with which our young people are likely to serve in any war, no matter how justified, shall be directly proportional to how they perceive the veterans of earlier wars and how they were treated and appreciated by their nation." President George Washington, and that is a lesson for us, for our returning Vietnam veterans. They were not appreciated when they first came back, but we are hopefully now in spades, giving them the love and the appreciation they need. So Jim, I'm going to hand arts and culture to you, too, because I'm going to stop talking.
No, go ahead. Go ahead and finish.
Sure, all right. Arts and culture. I'll keep on going. It's not even 11 o'clock yet, so hang in there.
It's pretty close.
Arts and culture. Arts and culture in the county. Rain Sparks Seasonal Gallery, Friday, October 25th through December 29th, 11 a.m. to 7 p.m. Rain Sparks Gallery in Lake Oswego. It's excited to be coming back in a new place from October 24th through December 29th, and you'll get lovely artwork there for Christmas through the artists and various pieces in shop for meaningful holiday toys. Milwaukee History Museum presents Milwaukee Kids, Friday, November 16th from 1 to 5. This is the newest exhibit at the Milwaukee History Museum, and it'll showcase artifacts, stories, and photographs on the lives and times of youths before the advent of computers and digital devices. The exhibit provides kids of today an opportunity to explore what life was life when their grandparents or great-grandparents were their age, and give older generations a chance to relive glorious memories of their youth. The exhibit will be on display throughout the year. Arts Alliance website, clackamasartsalliance.org. Boy, that history museum just made me feel real old, because I remember black and white television and Howdy Doody. Thank you, folks. Okay.
On Boy Scouts, I learned semaphore. That's the flag.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to be really quick. I want to thank Paul for serving on that transportation panel. I think you did a great job representing Clackamas County, the importance of I-205 and Sunrise funding. I really thought you did a great job. I was a little upset about, you know, a lot of the pushback on the Oglo Bridge isn't about the cost of the bridge, it's about people from this side going over there. And I was, I thought that was disturbing, and that gentleman, no one pushed back on him, and they should have. Matter of fact, one of, one of the people who lived on that very street where that bridge is supposed to land now lives on Lake Oswego and has two big houses, and, you know, we all start somewhere. And so I was a little sad. Next month, I'm going to have Jay Wilson give us a report that he presented to the Regional Disaster Per度nus Organization, of which I will be the chair next year, about, you know, the impact of the oil storage tanks on the Willamette River, and should, and it just happens to be built right next to the fault line. If that occurs, a big one, it will shut down the Willamette and the Columbia River and be a terrible disaster, which means that the route for emergency services will come from eastern Oregon and will pass, will need a good highway, the Sunrise, to get those resources to the communities in need. So there was a map in there, and 212 was shown on it, and I think it's a really good argument why the Sunrise is an important, critical transportation facility should a disaster occur. Yesterday, we went, I went to an innovations grant open house funded by the U.S. Forest Service about a relationship to the courthouse. I thought it was a great presentation. These are kids from Oregon University of Oregon. Almost said the wrong college.
OSU.
OSU. Who came in, you know, these are young architects that were just given a project with no limits, and they were very interesting. I liked some of them, except that I think one of the things, you know, in Eugene where they have the government buildings, they look like they're built for a bomb, you know, with that concrete over the windows and stuff. I'd say some of that was taken into account in some of those designs, so I wouldn't really be excited about that. So the veterans events were great. One of, one of my priorities is childcare here on campus. Should the courthouse, when the courthouse is built, and when our, our partners such as Clackamas Women's Services, Family Justice Center have people who are here to get help, there should be a place for kids to be left off. And that, and our employees. Our employees spend a lot of money on childcare. I don't want to compete with, with other childcare providers, but there is an adequate supply of them anyway. So it'd be great if we had that here on campus. So we'll be looking at that. And with that, due to our shortage of time, I will adjourn the meeting, and thank you all for coming. We're adjourned.